I'd like to welcome you all to the, hello. The Monday, March 27th, 2023 Gardner Planning Commission meeting. We'll call the meeting to order. Everyone would please rise and state the pledge of allegiance with me.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll try and be good with the mics, they're usually not this echoey. All right, roll call, I'll start down with my left. Cooper here.
Commissioner Juneman here.
Commissioner McNair here.
Commissioner Mader here.
Commissioner Ham here.
Commissioner Soza here.
Commissioner Holmes here.
We have a quorum present, seven in order.
Madam Chair, I'll just note that this is Commissioner Holmes' first meeting with us since he has been appointed. He was actually appointed last month, but we did not have a meeting. So we've reseated that side of the room per the standards that the city uses by seniority and appointment, so.
Great, thank you and welcome. Moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the planning commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion desired on an item from either the planning commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Commissioners, is there any item that any member of the commission would like have moved to the regular agenda?
Yes, I'd like to move the final development plan for Alitha Ford RV to the regular agenda.
So move, we have a motion, does that require a motion and a second to move the item?
Yeah, you'll make a motion on consent agenda after you've seen if there's any other items that need to be moved.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Juneman to move item number three from the consent agenda down to the regular agenda. Do I have a second on that? We have a second by McNair. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, item number three of the consent agenda is moved to the regular agenda and I'm assuming that will go at the top.
Yeah, we'll do that currently. Usually with consent items, if the commissioner who pulled it has questions, we will respond to those questions.
Perfect, okay. Okay, and then I should ask the, from the floor, is there any item any member of the public would like have moved to the regular agenda from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion on the two remaining items on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by McNair with a second by Juneman that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, regular agenda, now that we have item three moving to one, Alitha Ford RV 23-304-05, final development plan and final site plan, southwest corner of I-35 and Gardner Road. Commissioner Juneman, you had specific questions? We do have the applicant with us and staff.
Yes, applicant representative is here.
This is directed for staff, but I know last meeting we had this, a lot of discussion about Lot Two in the back and about the gravel versus pavement and stuff. I didn't see anything in the packet that related to that portion of the property. So I'm assuming that if we approve this final development plan, that Lot Two will have to come up again in front of us and we can discuss it later at that time.
That's correct. The preliminary plan for this item was approved with Lot Two on it. The final plan or the first phase of their project only involves Lot One at this point in time. So the final plan only covers Lot One. Lot Two would have to come in as a separate final development plan and would be before you at the time it's ready to go.
Okay, and that would be like another consent agenda item?
It could be, it really depends. So the reason that this one was on the consent agenda is that staff deemed it substantially in compliance with the approved preliminary plan. There were no major changes to it that required you looking further at that element. So because it's in substantial compliance with the preliminary plan, we felt the consent agenda was appropriate. It's likely that the second one, the second lot, will come forward as a regular agenda item just because of the discussion related to gravel and other things that were going on there.
Thank you.
That's all I got. Okay, any other commissioners have questions? Okay, seeing no other questions, do I just ask for a motion to approve?
Yes.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve then Alitha Ford RV, the final development plan and final plot.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Ham with a second by McNair. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. All right, I guess now do I need to renumber the agenda items or does it really matter?
No, you can, you can go through them as regular agenda items, one through four.
Perfect, okay. All right, so then regular agenda item number one, Moose's Barbecue Food Truck, 23-305-01, a conditional use permit, this is a public hearing, located at 213 East Main Street in Gardner, Kansas. Presentation this evening from staff?
Yes, we do. So this is item one, a conditional use for Moose's Barbecue Food Truck. The subject property is located at 213 East Main Street. That's about 250 feet east of Elm Street. The site is about .3 acres in size and it's zoned C1, which is our central business district here in the downtown area. It is surrounded by commercial zoning on all four sides and has commercial uses to the north, east, and west. However, there are residential uses to the south. So commercial zoning, but the land use is residential. On the future land use map, it is labeled as core mixed use. Moose's Barbecue Food Truck has operated on the site for several years. It stays on the property when not in operation. The recent mobile food text amendments make it necessary for food trucks that are hooked up to utilities or that are, stay on the site when not in operation to have a conditional use permit. Here we have a rough site plan that the applicant submitted. The smoker is on the eastern side of the property with the trailer on the southern side as it is currently, with seating in front, that would be added. Staff finds that the general business operations and hours are compatible with other commercial uses in the area and will not negatively impact the nearby residential. There are 11 conditions, recommended conditions of approval with this. They can be added to or removed by the planning commission. These are commission, conditions that the staff finds are, will be helpful in kind of laying out what is expected since these are kind of the first conditional uses for food trucks. We haven't gone through this before. Staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval to the governing body for the conditional use permit for Moose's Barbecue with the conditions in the recommended motion. And staff is available for any questions.
Fantastic, thanks. I think we'll open the public hearing to see if any members of the public would like to speak on this. Please keep in mind that there is a time limit and I see we've got the timer up. In my bylaws, I have three minutes per individual and seven.
It's three minutes, that's set to the council or actually to the applicant time because the applicant usually has a few minutes more to start up.
It cannot be changed.
We'll track it on our end.
Okay, okay, so if anyone would like to speak on this item, no more than three minutes per individual or seven minutes for an individual representing a group. So if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this item, please state your name and address for the public record.
Madam Chair, we might invite the applicant if they're present to come up.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, this would be a great time if the applicant would like to speak and has anything they'd like to add. Please come forward and state your name and address. Okay, all right, any member of the public would like to speak on this? Seeing none coming forward, I would entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to close the public hearing made by McNair with a second by Ham. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The public hearing is now closed. All right, planning commissioners, this is your time for questions for staff. And I'll just go ahead and start on the end. Commissioner Cooper, any question?
No questions.
No questions or comments?
Mr. Ham?
No comments, no questions.
Commissioner Soza?
I just have a question. So, so the permit is for four years then because it expires in December 2027?
Yes, so what is being recommended is that the permit be extended for that period of time. But each year they will come in for a temporary use permit. There'll be an administrative review that's done. We will check to see if there's any complaints regarding the business as well as making sure that the business is being operated in compliance with the conditions of the conditional use permit. If there's a finding that they've had complaints or they're not following those conditions and the regulations of the city, we can bring the permit back to the planning commission and city council for review again at any time during this period and revocation can be considered as part of that. So we feel that we have that administrative process set up for that annual temporary use permit. They just would not have to come back for the conditional use permit until basically December of 2027.
Just one question. And our newest commissioner, I missed your last name during roll call.
Holmes, no further questions.
Great, thank you. All right, if we don't have any questions, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
Madam Chair, too, I'll intervene. Since these have so many conditions on them, whoever makes the motion, if the commission feels that these are the conditions they want as part of the motion, it is perfectly adequate to just read the paragraph and say that the condition, as listed in the staff report and on the screens, the 11 conditions are along with the motion. So you don't have to read all 11 conditions.
Good, thank you, yes, thank you for the reminder. That's a good one to call out.
I'll make it.
Okay.
After review of application 23-305-01, a conditional use permit for Moose's Barbecue at 213 Main Street and staff report dated March 22nd, 2023, the planning commission review or recommends the approval of the application as proposed with the printed conditions one through 11.
Second.
A motion made by McNair and a second by Ham. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Regular agenda item number two. Arisa Hibachi Food Truck, I might have got that wrong. 23-305-02, a conditional use permit, this is also a public hearing, located at 312 West Main Street. We have a presentation from staff this evening.
We do.
Great.
So this food truck is located at 312 West Main Street, about 250 feet west of Pine Street. The site is slightly larger, .38 acres, and it too is zoned C1, the central business district. This property, however, is surrounded by residential zoning and land use. On the future land use, it is labeled as community mixed use though. In 2022, the food truck obtained a temporary use permit to operate on the site. It stays on the property when not in operation and is connected to electric, water, and wastewater utilities. The applicant has submitted a conditional use permit to continue to operate on the property under the new code regulations. The food truck is located just to the east of the existing building, which is on the western side. They have tables and seating where the old restaurant used to be, kind of in that center area. And the site has a one-way entrance and exit for circulation. Staff finds that the general business operations and hours are compatible with other commercial uses typically allowed in C1 District. However, the use in this location may impact nearby residential homes. There are 16 recommended conditions of approval for this item. Some are to ensure that the regulatory standards are met during the conditional use permits duration and others are to help bring the property closer into compliance with the code and mitigate any possible adverse effects on those residential uses. Once again, they can be added to or removed by the planning commission, of course. Staff recommends the planning commission recommend approval of the conditional use permit for the food truck at 312 West Main with the conditions in the recommended motion. And I didn't point this out for the first one, but there are two pages. This first has seven and then the second has the other nine.
Thank you. Great, this is another public hearing item. So those wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. Three minutes per individual, seven minutes for an individual representing a group.
I don't know if you can see me. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
My name is Melanie Warren and I live at 322 West Main Street here in Gardner. And I wanted to talk a little bit about how the food truck has impacted us as we live next door to it. And it is surrounded by residential area. My husband Steve and I have lived at 322 West Main for 16 years. We love our home, we love Gardner. We especially enjoy our outdoor space. My husband and I have spent many hours sitting in our rocking chairs on our front porch, which if you drive by, you can probably see us. I also enjoy gardening. I happily spend hours outside mowing my lawn, planting new flowers, caring for the ones I already have, and until last year, tending my vegetable garden. I didn't put a garden out last year because the food truck is so close to my garden spot. When I saw the food truck being parked next door, I had no idea what that would mean for us. Suddenly, our outdoor space was filled with the strongest, most intrusive and unpleasant smells I have ever dealt with. The odors are so strong that unless the food truck is either closed or the wind is blowing west, we are unable to open our windows, our doors, or our patio door to enjoy the fresh air. The odors, as well as the odors from the dumpster, which is only emptied once a week, and it reeks with rotten food and trash and it will permeate our home within minutes and has. Trash from the truck often blows into our yard and because of the food truck, we were not able to sit on our front porch last year unless it was before they opened or when they were closed. We tried to sit on our patio and we even purchased a large industrial fan to try to keep the odors at bay. But it's hard to enjoy a good conversation while a large fan is blowing behind you. There are other reasons why we dislike the food truck being so close to us. We are a residential area. Unfortunately, because the owner of the adjacent property took advantage of an oversight and leased it commercially to the food truck, we are no longer a quiet residential neighborhood. We have cars pulling in and out of the parking lot, doors slamming, headlights shining in our windows, and gone are the quiet evenings we enjoyed for years. Now there are lights from the food truck at night, cars, noise, exhaust, and sometimes music playing. Traffic will back up on Main Street or people park on Circle Drive, which sits to the right of our house. Our neighbors have all dealt with the same issues as we have. It seems as though our properties and our lives have taken a backseat to Hibachi that we had no idea was going to be placed in the middle of our neighborhood. We have talked many times about how much of a negative impact the food truck has had on our lives and I'm not being dramatic. I would like to point out that we have nothing personal against the owners of the food truck. My husband and I are small business owners as well and we understand the work and expense that goes into owning your own business. However, the bottom line is the food truck is an unwelcome intrusion into our lives and our neighbors' lives. And as homeowners, we have a lot more invested in our properties than they have in their business. We pay a lot in property taxes and feel like it's unfair to have to deal with the food truck so close to our residence. They can move their food truck, but this is where we live. These are our homes and we would like our peaceful and quiet neighborhood back. Thank you.
Thank you. As with the other, the prior public hearing item, I don't know if we have the applicant with us. This will be an opportune time to speak. Or any other member of the public who'd like to speak on this item, please come forward and be heard. Going once, going twice, I don't think we have any others that want to speak on this item, so I'll entertain a motion.
And I'm just, I'm just gonna make sure the applicant is not here today. So I'll make sure.
I'm not the applicant, but I'm the manager of the property.
Okay.
I guess.
Do you want to talk anything regarding the application?
So we just take it as there's no applicant then for questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion then to close the public.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing made by McNair with a second by Ham. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I did not hear you.
We can, so what we can do, we can close the public hearing, go through your discussion items and that. What we can do is if we have questions for the person, we can call the backup to answer those, I think. Or how would you prefer to do it?
You say we don't answer questions.
We don't have a conversation. Typically, it's, it's not.
Which house? Why don't you have her, can you reset your address?
Yes, 322 West Main Street. And the food truck sits here and our house sits back behind the old dairy cup. Our house sits back behind there and so the food truck is right next to it.
Maybe pull up that.
To the west of the food truck.
Very, very, yeah, very, oh, perfect.
So they're to the west and slightly north of the food truck area. So there's a vacant property and then a building that you can see up there on Circle Drive, kind of what curves. So that, they're to the west of the food truck property. West, northwest. Right.
No, the house sits right correctly.
Okay, yep.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. So that way that formality is taken care of. I'll mark you down, Cooper's voting no. So six, six yays and one nay on closing the public hearing. Okay, all right, so this is then commission discussion and Commissioner Cooper, I'll just go ahead and continue on with you. Did that spark some questions, knowing or discussion with staff, knowing now where the public speaker came and spoke? Where the location is? Does that bring up other questions?
Yeah, I do have other questions.
Sure, go ahead. I think Commissioner Cooper has some questions.
I don't, I don't have any time. I do have a question. When this, when this went, this permit went in for this food truck, did a notification go out to all the neighbors in this area?
Yeah, yeah, so for a conditional use permit, everybody within 200 feet, property owners within 200 feet of the site are given a letter or sent a letter directly to the mailing address for the property owner. It was advertised in the newspaper. It goes through all the public hearing notification processes that we are required to do.
Gardner's not the newspaper for that. What's the newspaper?
It's a legal notice.
Legal notice.
So it goes to, legal notice is the publication that does it.
So it's not the local.
It's not the local Gardner newspaper. But again, everybody within 200 feet should have as property owners. Now, if they are not the property owner, they would not have. The property owners within 200 feet of this site would have been sent a direct mail.
Do we have, do we have, can we look at what the parameters are? Where's 200 feet? How many people do they have?
Jesse, do you recall from the buffer map?
I'm not sure if it would have gone on the other side of the next road out. It's kind of, two hundred feet would be maybe one ring of the surrounding houses, and maybe in certain areas, it would have grabbed the next one after that.
So, so the two hundred feet should be, this is not the scale, so it's hard for me to tell you exactly. But a buffer map is required to submit it, that this is part of the mailing address. So when we look at that, and I would say, you're likely, as Jesse was talking about, you're likely across Circle Drive, across Pine Street, be across Main Street, and maybe a couple lots deep to the north, somewhere in that range is where it would hit. Because if it touches upon any portion of a lot owned, that would be notified. So even if it cuts a corner of a property on that. One of the things that I want to make sure we clarify too is, when the food truck initially went in, it was prior to the conditional use permit requirement. So it received a temporary use permit, just like any other food truck would have at that point in time. Now, because of the situation of how they have put the food truck in and what's happened with the connection to the utilities and that, that's what's requiring the conditional use permit. So under the temporary use permit, we did not have this process in place from our code changes. Nobody would have been notified at that point in time, because it's merely an administrative permit. That's what the temporary use permit is. So that's what, that's what's raising the bar here this year, is the fact that they're required to come in for the conditional use permit.
So how far, how far does the notice go out for the conditional use permit?
That's the two hundred feet. Correct, but the temporary, right, the temporary use permit that they would have received the previous year, there was no notifications on that.
Okay, that's what I was asking about, because the first.
Yeah, from when they first started. When they first started, they felt.
This is the first time the neighbors have been in.
That's correct.
Any other questions for now?
Not for now, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Jimenez?
So I was just reading through some of the recommendations, and it mentions that things, the physical barriers need to be provided, or, sorry, trash dumpsters and oil and equipment storage must be appropriately enclosed, screened, and secured per city regulations. Is that, I mean, is that a, like, four-foot fence? Is that vegetation? Because I know, like, when we did the conditional use permit for, like, the recycling center, they were required to put in trees.
Correct.
On the back of their property, to screen some of the residences that were around that.
They would.
Is something similar going to be required here?
Right.
By the, by that language?
Yes, they would be required. So as Jesse mentioned, we're trying to bring them into closer compliance with the code requirements, and that's a typical code requirement, that the dumpsters and mechanical equipment things are fully screened. So that means the height has to exceed the height of the dumpster, has to exceed the height of that equipment, and then it has to be fully enclosed. Now, it can be a combination of fencing, landscaping, those kinds of things, but they will have to come to us with a plan that shows that and then implement that plan. They have not provided specifics on that at this point.
Yeah, I think it would have been nice to see some specifics on landscaping, closer to what we're used to seeing. I guess, kind of relating to the site plan, another comment I had is, I'm not a fan of the circulation map. I went and visited the site a couple days ago and just, just pulling through, and there was a DoorDash person that was picking up at the window, and he had his motorcycle parked away from it, and he went and picked up his food, and he was kind of in a hurry, you know, trying to make money. He turned around pretty quickly, you know, I'm coming around the corner, slow, slow speed, and it still kind of surprised me, so I'd like to see some more, I mean, it was, it was clear they'd made some physical improvements to the site, there's some concrete for the seating area that seemed that they'd put in recently. But the way it still is now, there's no physical barrier between where people are standing and queuing to order. I think there needs to be some more work done before we, it doesn't seem very safe compared to other food truck areas that I've been to.
Mr. McNair?
Can we put that, that lot diagram back up? Site, the site diagram? There we go. Thank you. This goes back before, we, we've lived here in Gardner for a number of years, quite a few years, actually. And I think I remember hearing, where the picnic area table, or picnic table area, has there been a restaurant there before, is that correct? At some point? And the little blue building where the restroom is, it's been there for a long time. So there have been restaurant-type activities in this area. My question is, have there been restaurant-area activities in this area for quite a number of years?
There, there had been, but then it's been vacant for a number of years also. So the, the building was obviously removed, the actual restaurant building was removed, and it was a vacant site up until when the food truck came back into, into play.
And it had been at least a restaurant at some point in the past?
There, that's my understanding, is that in the past, there was a restaurant there. That is why the property was zoned C.
C two, C one?
Yeah. So that's why it was zoned C one initially, because that's what, there was a commercial use there at that time.
Is there, does staff have any concerns, or attorney have any concerns as far as this being the proper use and zoning for this property?
Well, I, I do believe that the concerns related to the closeness and proximity to residential are appropriate here. I think that's why you see the number of conditions that the staff has placed onto this as a recommendation for approval. You may feel that additional recommendations are needed, or would like to see more detail as to how certain things are going to be implemented here. I would tell you, you do have options to add conditions here, you do have options to table this for further information from the applicant to address some of the questions that you've gotten here, or you can even recommend denial if you choose. So understand, this is, this site here is one of the sites that raises that question of, where do we really want to have uses like this in relationship to their context? Do we want, and are we going to be more sensitive to residential uses and things like that? So this being one of the first ones where we're dealing with this, staff put a pretty significant list of conditions together, but it sounds like there may be some others that, that you all would like to see addressed too.
And just one more question for staff. Is this the site that, kind of, lack of better words, pushed the envelope as far as utilities and some of the kind of things?
It was, it was the site that, well, let's put it this way, it's where we first noticed the use that was connecting up to utilities beyond electrical. So it was, it was connecting the sewer and water at this point.
That's all, that's all, that's all my questions, thanks.
Okay. Mr. Hamm?
Yes, I would have liked to have seen the applicant here to address a lot of this. And I know when we were talking about changing everything to include these conditions, that our top priority was the, the livability of the residence. So I'm deeply troubled. I felt Ms. Warren's statement was very compelling, and I would like, I'm not very pleased with this. So I would like to hear from the applicant. I would like more information on if there is any mitigating factors that we could, that the applicant can propose to address Ms. Warren's concerns, and to appease our state of mind with this, because this is very shaky ground to me.
Very good. Commissioner Lozlo?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner here. By looking at the site plan, me, you know, feel that this is surrounded by single-family residents, and listen to the concerns that the resident had. I can see that the used oil, the dumpster is too close to the fence. I'm not sure if, if this is city regulations, maybe we could move the used oil far away from the fence. I think the first picture that we had, there was a vacant lot on the other side of the, of the, where the food truck is, so maybe move some things around, maybe put the dumpster and the used oil, that it's got to create that odor, you know, bad smell, maybe far away from the fence. I think it would be easy, nice if we could have the applicant here so we could, could suggest some changes, you know.
Okay.
Sorry, my voice is.
Oh, you're fine, you're fine. Do you have any questions to add? Okay. More, more information.
Make some changes.
And some, right, more reference to the site. Commissioner Combs, anything to add?
Yeah, I have several questions, actually. I agree with Commissioner Hamm. We certainly should have the truck owner here to defend themselves. But I have a few, maybe clerical questions, uniquely to the mobile use permit as well as the affidavit submitted. Number one, it appears the use permit might be incorrectly filled out, and second, the affidavit may be omitting some information. Specifically, I'm referring to the owner on the use permit application. And then we, or when looking at the affidavit submitted, the owner is clearly submitted, excuse me, listed. However, and number two, where truly the affidavit should illustrate who the authority of, you know, is to speak on their behalf seems to be missing. So if we could address those two items initially, that'd be great.
Okay. So I'm getting general consensus, and I also feel the, the same, that really the site plan is lacking, and I also had concerns about the, the landscaping. I mean, this is a, a pretty intense use surrounded by a very non-intense use, and just to see general landscaping, okay, well, give me, more detail in general, is what I would like to, to see as well. Commissioner McNair, did you have something?
Yes, I, I did. Just in listening to the general conditions, and Commissioner Hamm did an excellent job, by the way, thank you. I, I think it, probably, I, I'd just like to put a suggestion out there that maybe we extend this or continue this for a thirty-day period to allow, and ask that we have the, the applicants, the owners and/or operators available for questions and concerns at the next Planning Commission meeting. I'd like to put that out there. In fact, I'd like to make a motion.
Say what you'd like to turn that into.
So before you make a motion, I want to, I want to clarify some things, because I'm going to nod over here to our legal advisor too, so if I say something errantly, he can smack me.
We don't want to do anything bad.
No. It does sound like, it does sound like there's a willingness to table this item until there's more clarity on the information that, that's requested and getting this completed, and also for the applicant, and I would say also the property owner should be present as part of that. If you choose to table it, what I was leaning towards our legal advisor was, is that we don't necessarily, because we're looking for more information, because we're asking the applicant to be present, we do not have to set a time certain necessarily for this to reappear, so we don't have to limit it just to the next planning commission, because it may take them a longer period of time to answer those questions, depending on what's going on. What we will probably need to do, I would assume, is that if we table it in that manner, administratively, we would probably renotice the surrounding property owners and things like that, prior to that planning commission, where we would have those things present. That way, everybody gets renoticed, the neighboring property owners and everything would be aware that now the application's been revised and being brought forward again. That way, they're not left in limbo, thinking, well, is it going to be this month, is it going to be next month, when is it going to be? They would get a specific notification, just like they did for this public hearing. Does that make sense?
And just to remind you, to you and to neighbors here, the notice, well, you got your notice, you're aware of how early it goes out, so it makes it a little less likely that we'll be able to get answers in the next month's hearing.
So would it be appropriate, more appropriate to just table it or continue it to a time certain when the property owner, the operators, and other resources of people and time come together?
As part of the motion, rely on staff to do it appropriately on the agenda and send out notices.
Right, exactly. Exactly, that's, that's what I meant by time certain.
Yeah.
We're on the same page.
We're making, yeah, we're just talking this way. We're just, okay.
So I think, I think what David and I recommended, table it and not for specific, we're going to take this up in, in April, or can you just table it until we have any questions?
Before they're, before they're fired?
Yeah, and the property owner, the center should be here, present, make sure they're here to hear your questions.
I'll take a stab at it then. I'd like, I'd like to make a motion that we table this, this application until such time that the property owner, the operator of the business, and any and all other necessary resources and the noticing required are in place.
Second.
All right, we have a second, or we have a first by McNair and a second by Hamm. Any questions on the motion? You did a good job. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
I got the last one, so it was your turn.
Good job. All right, item number three, Grand Street Development, Z dash twenty-two dash eleven rezoning, PDP dash two-two dash one-one preliminary development plan, and PP dash two-two dash zero-seven, a final plat, this is also a public hearing, north of Grand Street, across from Grand Star Elementary. Do we have a staff presentation this evening?
Yes, we do have a staff presentation. And you'll have to forgive me, I'm feeling a little wonky and under the weather right now, so bear with me if you can't hear me.
Okay.
Again, this is item three, Grand Street Development rezoning, preliminary development plan, and a preliminary plat. The application is for rezoning from RUR, which is a county zoning district, rural residential, to RP one, RP two, RP three, and RP five. This proposed development is a true mixed-use residential development that is incorporating a mix of different housing types, from single-family estate development to fifty-five and older mature living to also assisted living. Proposed development has a total of one hundred and ninety-six lots with four hundred and ninety-seven units. And then also, I have to say that. Property includes approximately one hundred and twenty acres of land located just north of both Grand Street, Grand Street Elementary and Trail Ridge Middle Schools, bound to the north by the BNSF railroad tracks. The original, it was originally annexed earlier this year, and the site has historically been used as agricultural crop lands. All utilities are available to the site. Zoning to the north is, of course, right away for the BNSF railroad. There is some R two and R five located on the northwest side of the land. To the east is RP two, R three, RP three, and M two. The M two is the manufacturing, it's kind of colored in blue, it's off of Warren Street. To the south is R one for the schools and some single-family residential, and then to the west is R one and RP five. The preliminary development plan proposes two distinctive types of residential developments. The west side of the development is planned for larger lot estate type of single-family housing, while the east side of the development is a planned senior living residential development. The Grand Mission Estates, which is on the west side, is a seventy-six lot estate type of development with a density of about one point six units per acre. The Villas on Grand, which is the senior living side, incorporates a neighborhood type housing along with a section of four-plex style townhomes and two multi-story independent assisted living housing, for a total of one hundred and twenty lots and four hundred and twenty-one units. The development includes several mini areas and a large area of open space that divides the two developments. The phasing plan shows four phases for the Villas at Grand, senior living. And then for the west side, which is the Grand Mission Estates. And then for the west side, which is the Grand Mission Estates, single-family, there are three phases for developing this site. While this area is located within the main street corridor subarea of the comprehensive plan, there was not a lot of detail for future land use considerations of this particular parcel. The proposed development does provide for the transitions that are mentioned in the plan as it pertains to single-family to the south and the downtown commercial corridor along Main Street. And staff findings within this plan, contacts to propose multifamily senior living buildings are compatible in size and scale to adjacent apartments to the east and are separated from existing single-family uses by a large natural buffer within the center of development. The overall pattern is a lower density format than the existing apartments, for the existing apartments to the east. This also fulfills a long-needed senior living housing component to our community. This infill parcel has long remained undeveloped. The staff findings are the plan reflects generally accepted and sound planning and urban design principles by providing a variety of housing types in the area and community and fiscally responsible extension of the utilities. Benefits from a flexibility in the standards allows for project higher-end amenities for the residential. And the project will benefit the general public, health, safety, and welfare of the community by providing park and open space, utility extensions, and public street extensions. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, great. As part of this, they're also requesting several deviations. Uh, they've got a deviation from the internal sidewalk width from eight feet down to six for vehicle overhangs for the, uh, senior living. Uh, they're also asking for, uh, within that same section of the code, uh, to go from eight feet on the primary route between the street and parking area of the building entrance to, down to six feet. The staff recommends approval on both those reductions of width of the sidewalk. And then they've also got a street network, block sizes and connectivity. Uh, suburban block length, uh, according to code is five hundred foot minimum, minimum, and a thousand foot maximum. They're proposing fifteen hundred feet. They're requesting a deviation on the maximum required block length from thousand to fifteen hundred. That's mainly because this development is kinda blocked in from two sides and has, uh, very limited access out onto Grand Street. And the staff recommends approval of this deviation as well. Staff findings of the preliminary plat of the application is generally consistent with the comprehensive plan. The plat is also in compliance with the Land Development Code. And the plat does not deter any existing or future development on adjacent parcels. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from RUR District to RP one, RP two, RP three, and RP five districts associated preliminary development plan and preliminary plat for Grand Street Development with the conditions outlined.
Great, thank you, Bob.
You're welcome, thank you.
This is also a, um, public hearing item, so any member of the public wishing to come forward and speak on this item, please state your name and address for the public record and be heard. Individuals will be given three minutes, and those representing a group will be given seven. And if the applicant is here and has anything to share with the commission, now would be a great time to do so. Please come forward and state your name and address for the public record.
I'm sorry, ma'am, did you want to hear from the applicant now?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Now's a great time.
It'd be great.
I'm Mark Huggins, Payne and Brockway, uh, four twenty-six South Kansas in Latha. This is Mike Brock, the owner of the project. I've got some boards I could put up if it would help any.
Sure, I think that would be fine with the commission.
Yeah, we've got some, uh, boards here that show the, the accentuation of the landscaping that we're proposing on this site. We've been working with staff, this, this is a challenging site with the railroad on the north side and, you know, industrial on the east and the, uh, the storm drainage issues that we're facing on this site. We've been working with staff for a number of months to come to a plan that, that staff is comfortable with and that will work for the development. And, uh, we'd just like to say we're, we're in agreement with staff's report. We'd be willing to answer any questions you may have, and we'd sure appreciate being able to move forward this, with this tonight.
Great, I'm happy to hear that. We have you guys present, um, when it comes time for commission discussion. If there's anything coming your way, we'll have you come back up and answer questions.
And I might mention, we've got two boards here, one's, one's side of the project, one's the other. So if you wanna see any of that, just let us know.
Fantastic, thank you. Any other member of the public would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record.
Hi, I'm Ruth Ann Fisher, I live at one eight three seven two Butternut. I actually am speaking on the next matter, but I wanted to add to this. Has the commission even thought of the traffic that it's gonna cause with an elementary school there and a middle school there? It's already a problem during the day when you're taking your kids, dropping them off and picking them up. This is going to overload it and then throw in Center and Grand where we don't have a traffic light. And every day, driving through there, it's very scary watching the crossing guard come out, trying to stop traffic. That crossing guard, too, is in a very dangerous situation. And this is only going to add to it. I think you guys need to think about that and think about our children and other safety of other people that work for the city, or I guess they don't work for the city, but that help the city by being crossing guards, and worry about that as well. Gardner is big about their multifamily dwellings. I mean, that's what's gonna happen with the Butternut area. I think you guys need to take that into consideration. We have children, we have families here, and this is only gonna make it worse and the traffic. There is no good way to get in and out of there. There's one way in, or two ways in and out. And the other end has this elementary school as well. Have we considered any of that? That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the public record.
My name's Pamela Whitney, I live at two three one South Elm Street. Um, I am in the northwest corner of the development, which is gonna be circled around me. I'm concerned about the Kane Street extension that they've listed here. I don't know what our street is gonna look like after this. I'm excited about the project, but there is two, um, small family homes across the street, and I own the three acres, um, between the development and the railroad. I don't have a curb, and I have a terrible street, and I feel like this all fancy new shiny stuff's going around me. And this lot's been neglected by the city since I've lived here for eleven years. So I'd like, I'd like a perk.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. Seeing no other members coming forward to speak on this item, I'll entertain that we close the public meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by McNear with a second by Hamm that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Public hearing is now closed, this is the planning commission discussion, we do have the applicant with us. We've had a couple of, um, residents speak on some concerns, so we'll make sure, um, get some input from the applicant and staff, and maybe I'll just start with that. I'll kick us off instead. Uh, traffic concerns, um, on Grand Street, that, that was a very good point, I assume is part of the process, right? It might be good just to share with others, you know, that process, like applicant.
Right, so there is a, there is a requirement for a traffic study to be done as part of the process. I'm gonna let the applicant speak to what has been done, and that, that obviously gets finalized as plans get finalized. But, um, from a preliminary standpoint, also tonight, uh, the Public Works Director's here with us, but let the applicant kinda answer those questions first and then go from there.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be great, and traffic concerns, and I think also the Kane Street extension, we wanted to touch on that as well. I don't think that was part of the, the plan.
I'll speak to that after.
Okay, perfect, all right.
We, we did have a, uh, traffic study, an assessment of the potential traffic created by this development, prepared and submitted to the city, and the city's reviewed it. Uh, you know, one of the key points is the, the east side of this is, you know, for older residents, you know, it's, there's, I don't know, I guess you could call it retirement buildings. And, uh, the peak, the peak traffic flows from this site will not coincide with the, the peak traffic times for the schools. I think the middle school gets there about a quarter to L eight, and, uh, the, the elementary doesn't get there until eight, ten. I think they can do drop-offs, and, uh, and then they're, they're dismissed by three thirty. And the peak traffic, you know, it's just like any residential neighborhood. Most people are coming home from work between four and five. So the, the peak flow, the peak traffic to the neighborhood's going to be after the peak time of the school in the afternoon. That is the peak time for the school, when it will have the most traffic is in the afternoon. I'm not, I'm a civil engineer, we had a traffic engineer prepare this, but they're not here. Is, does that make sense? Is that?
General sense, but I know we've got new commissioners on, and I don't know if staff wanted to add anything, and we also have our Public Works.
I'm just gonna point out primarily for the commission, too, that there are multiple, multiple entry points and exit points that are part of this plan. So for instance, what you have on the screen in front of you, um, and on the board in front of you, you can see that the independent living is served by Warren Street heading to the east, so that bit of traffic is not scheduled, or I'll say a good portion of that traffic will not come through the development onto Grand Street. Then you have a connection to Pine Wood Street also to the east. So the multiple connections are intended to help disperse that traffic, so it's not all coming to Grand Street. And again, on that east side, these are, uh, senior living units that we're talking about. As you look at that, on the west side, where it's the single-family, um, in addition to the two connections on Grand Street, they also are showing an extension of Kansas to, um, Center Street. So there's another relief area there with a direct connection in it. And that's all part of what was considered as part of the traffic study that was reviewed by Public Works.
I had just, real quick question. It looks like the, is the east side of this property development predominantly, uh, older and retirement, uh, independent, assisted, residential living, is that sort for older folks?
Yeah, the whole east side is fifty-five and older.
So that's, that's probably gonna be a terrible high-traffic amount of people.
Probably minimal kids living there.
Commissioner Hamm, you have questions?
Yes, um, so the, the homes, oh, let me start by saying I'm glad to see the senior and the assisted living. I love the idea about keeping our gardener residence, uh, from the beginning to the end in our community. So I, I love that you guys are bringing that to our community. Um, the, uh, the rows next to the, uh, great, the railroad tracks, are you guys doing any sound abatement for that?
Well, on the senior side, we plant, there's a detention basin kinda running a pretty good length, but we're gonna try to berm as much as we can between that and the tracks. You know, which be right here in this area. This, this area is the kind of lower part of the tracks. And that's why we put the, the top building right there is a, a senior apartment building. So it'd be fifty-five and older, one apartment building. So that's, that's why we put that up in that corner. We originally had more four-plexes, townhomes up in there, but then we switched it out, put the senior apartments just because we saw a large need for that here in Gardner.
Yes. Um, so to Ms. Fisher's question about school traffic and crossing guards, I know that there's certain things that we see that they do not, and we do have the, um, the easement with the multiple access. So I'm glad to see that. As far as, I don't know if this is a staff question, Ms. Whitney's neglected lot next to her. I don't know if there is.
Kane, Kane Street, we won't be connecting to Kane Street.
Okay. And, um, the peak traffic, I think what Ms. Fisher was touching on, I know that we have, like, the, the times where cars are taking car riders, bus riders, but I think what she was addressing was those crossing guards, those students that need to walk, get to school earlier. Are we take, that is taking into consideration the, the walkers that are leaving to school earlier before those peak times? Or with the middle school, the, like, staying later and walking home? Are we taking into consideration sightlines and things like that for those students that are not traveling and are walking during, outside of, like, peak traffic hours?
May I have, uh, Kellen, the Public Works Director, chime in on this for a second? Uh, what I will tell you is there are sightline requirements at every intersection that are to be met so that they aren't blocked by landscaping or other elements, buildings and things like that. So I know in general, we have those kinds of requirements. Kellen, do you wanna speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, in general, those are part of our city specifications, and those would be ensured that the sidelines are, are met in those kinda situations. Based on the analysis of the traffic study that we did, there will be an increase in traffic at various intersections. The increase in traffic will be within kinda standards for turning movements and things like that, which is one element of the traffic, but that will not change the fact that there will be an increase in traffic at those peak times.
So will we be working with the schools to make sure that adequate staffing and crossing guards and things like that? I know that's probably not a common view, but I just, I just wanna put it out there that we are concerned of making sure that that's being addressed.
Correct. And, and you're doing that appropriately. I think, uh, the issue will be that the school will have to make some adjustments potentially in that personnel side of things. They do get notifications regarding these kinds of elements. They did not provide us with any commentary back, I don't believe, um, even though they would have received the public notice for this. The school district had property within two hundred feet, so, um, but we did not hear any concerns directly from them at this point in time. So, um, this will still be required as it's phased in to bring final development plans forward as well. That will relate to final traffic studies and things like that at that point in time.
I have no further questions.
Okay, Commissioner Sosa, any questions?
I think, uh, Commissioner Hamm asked a couple of questions that I had, so I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Combs?
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Good.
So I'm not a developer or designer of streets, but is there any, is there any explanation that could be provided for the entry and exit points that are specifically on Grand Street? So not, obviously, from the east or the west, but specifically right in front of both of the schools.
So, so I'll talk to city policies a little bit, and again, the Public Works Director may wanna add to this. So there are certain separation requirements that are required between the various road intersection points along this. Grand Street, I believe, is a collector's street. It has that, has several different separation requirements. In addition, none of the properties can directly access Grand Street with a driveway. So like the single-family lots and things like that will not be allowed to have individual access points. They'll have to go to the, uh, parallel road that's on the north side of those lots that are along, uh, Grand Street. So that is limited. Then, like I said, what they Then, like I said, what they try to do with the entry points and the roadways is align them with existing intersections. So the idea is either to be aligned with an existing drive or roadway or be separated a certain specific distance as required for some traffic safety standards. Kellen, do you have anything to add?
That is exactly correct.
And that makes sense. And certainly, if you look at the three entry points again on Grand Street, it would align with those intersections. I do have a concern of safety uniquely with the children, the crossing guards. I travel that area frequently and there are no homes. I'm excited about the concept of development, but traffic today can be a challenge. So that, I just want to list at least that initial concern. And maybe the final question, looking at both the east and the west, is there any reason or opportunity to increase the entry points from those angles beyond and/or redirect, excuse me, traffic to avoid the concerns and challenges that have been brought up? We're limited on both the east and the west.
Correct, so I think they're attempting to make the connections they can on the east and west edges to try to alleviate that. As to any additional road entries or exits along Grand Street, I mean, that could be looked at as a condition for this or as a way to go into the next step of the development review or planning process on it. I do not know, again, I'm gonna defer to the Public Works Director a little bit here. I don't know that that would necessarily change the outcomes of the traffic study because you're still dealing with the same volumes of travelers that are being generated by the use. It would allow for dispersment, but again, more entry or exit points along Grand is just gonna have that traffic going directly onto Grand Street.
And maybe the, thank you, the final comment would be, I would like to see the traffic study if possible.
It can be provided, it's a pretty, it's a pretty technical document, but typically we don't provide it to the planning commissioner, but we can do that. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, Commissioner McNair?
Yes, I just want to pick up on what Commissioner Ham had stated. One of the things I'm particularly excited about with this development is making quality housing for older residents in Gardner as a commissioner who is closer to age 70 than 60. I see this as a very good roadmap for people of the boomer generation that, you know, one of the things that can come as a result of this is a lot of housing in the city of Gardner that is currently occupied by couples over, empty nest couples over age 55 or 60. This could become a very viable opportunity for those kind of residents in our community and provide existing housing that is currently occupied in the city of Gardner for younger families to take and make use of. So this is really kind of a refreshing approach. I like the thinking of it, thank you very much.
Nope, I'm done.
Commissioner, do you have anything?
Kind of piggybacking on Commissioner Combs' comment, I guess. Why was, so you have the, it looks like kind of the main entrance to that single family subdivision there on the west side is kind of across from one of the schools. I guess why was the decision to put that main entrance there versus on Center Street there to the west?
We don't own that property.
So the extension to the west is a parcel property that is only a certain dimension, number one. It's a narrow piece. And it's between, actually, I believe it's a vacant lot currently with houses on the two adjacent lots, north and south. So to get an access point in there, it's gonna probably be a minor access point. And again, as was pointed out by the applicant, they currently do not own the property. So the idea is hopefully that that property will come under ownership with this to allow that extension.
Yeah, I had another concern about, you know, the future viability and just the sound that would be generated by the trains for people that would be potentially looking to live there. It looked like a lot of residential developments along this rail corridor had very established, large trees that were shielding a lot of the noise and the scythe of the train. I'm thinking Lenexa and Olafah farther up. So I would encourage a lot of, you know, a lot of vegetation if possible away from the power lines that are present in that corridor, if possible.
There's already quite a few trees that run along the tracks. I've spent quite a bit of time out there during the day and it's really not that loud.
Yeah, I just, I've been on the other side getting a haircut and it can be very loud.
Well, it seems louder on the other side of the tracks than it is over here for some reason. You know, I want to talk a little bit too about the senior side. It's gonna be a maintenance provided. So the single family villas will have the lawn, the snow removal, landscaping will be part of theirs. And then the townhomes will be full maintenance on the exterior. So painting, roof, the whole, the full exterior will be on the, and then we've got a clubhouse, which will have a pool, exercise room inside of it. We're thinking about putting one of those golf simulators in there. It'll have pickleball courts, putting green, dog park, just a shuffleboard on the ground, we'll have that. And then we've got a pretty extensive walking trail that goes completely around the whole thing with park benches. We've got a, the big detention basin will basically be a lake, which will have two picnic shelters on the senior side and one picnic shelter on the other side for the residents to use. And then the state side, they'll have their own pool with a big shelter, a sport court, playground. Yeah, and then. And then because we had a stream right through here, we turned this into a native, native forest preserve. We've, I've gotten the Kansas Department of Fish and Wildlife to help me, to kind of assist me on what to do there, help with planting the native grasses and kind of turn that into a natural habitat. So people can, and we kind of moved the trail to go through there and we'll be putting, you know, different types of birdhouses and stuff like that. I've also talked to them, there's a program, I think it's called the Owls Program. It's through the state where elementary schools and stuff can kind of go over and help be a part of it. So I've talked to them about the two schools being across the street where they could come over and have an outdoor classroom in that portion of it.
On that note, I noticed in the report it said it's gonna be a private trail around the lake and the pond there is that. So it's not gonna preclude, you know, people if they want to go on a walk, I guess.
I mean, if somebody's gonna walk in there, they don't, you can't.
The real differentiation from the city's standpoint is that it's not part of the public trail system through the master plan, the parks plan. What it is, is it's a private trail, it's provided by the developer there. Typically, the way those trails get used is there's nobody really regulating who's walking on it or anything. That's primarily intended for the people who live within those neighborhoods. But as you know, people use whatever's available.
And then kind of a question for the city Public Works. So not providing connection to Elm Street there on the north side of the property, you know, effectively kind of capping that off if there's a house built on Lot 21 as it's shown. Is that gonna cause any concerns in the future? Say if the viaduct over the railroad on Center Street needs to be rebuilt? And if we want to bring it up to a higher standard with a lower curve, vertical curve over the railroad tracks? Is that gonna cause any issues with Kane Street connecting into Center? I mean.
It's possible, a viaduct project is a very, very long way away. So, yeah, we could address that at that time.
Yeah, I just, it's kind of locking us into one solution there, I guess, so that'd be my only thing, like, I think, in long term here. And that's all I got.
Okay, great. Commissioner Cooper, questions?
I have two questions. One, this is for Dave, the, does Gardner have a regulation that limits how tall buildings can be?
Yes, there are height requirements that are associated with the zoning code. So all the buildings typically are, the heights are regulated based by the district itself. Because this is a development plan, when the final development plan comes forward for whichever phase, you know, the older, elderly housing or the single family housing to the west, they will have to meet those zoning requirements for heights. Or they can ask for a deviation, you know, based on the design of the building and things like that, so.
What are the current limitations or story limitations on buildings?
We'll check on that, give us a second. Yeah, it's four stories, I don't remember the specific height.
That's fine, I just. The other question I had was, sorry, you mentioned that the property that's gonna be the the egress, the minor egress, ingress, the Kansas Avenue, I guess, connected to Kansas Avenue. That property is owned by?
It's upon second.
So it's.
It's a red.
It's a private, private residence, so that property has, is not, I'm assuming it's not available. So that access, that ingress, egress access is not necessarily getting your permission?
We want it to.
We want it to, right. But that would reduce the, how would that affect the traffic studies?
I don't know if we included that in the traffic study because.
It wasn't included in the traffic study?
Staff's getting the answer on, I think it's four. I think it's four stories, I think.
So depending on, it depends on the building type that comes in. So just so you're aware, it could range in there depending on whether it's, yeah, mid-rise apartment or something of lesser density like the townhomes that they're talking about. It could range from 40 feet, looks like from 40 feet to 60 feet and the three to five stories depending on what type of building comes in. Those kinds of details usually come with the final development plan.
I just want to know for purposes of reference.
And in regard to the property to the west, as indicated, that would be another thing. If we're showing this as a preliminary development plan, the intent would be whenever this phase came to final plan, that that connection could be made, that the property is secured. If not, they may have to come in with a revision to this plan to reflect how they're dealing with the traffic at that point. But that would also come at final development stage.
If we don't have any other questions from the commission or final thoughts, thank you guys very much. We appreciate your presentation and conversation. I'll entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
After review of application Z-22-11 and PDP-22-11 rezoning and associated preliminary development plan and PP-22-07 preliminary plat for Grand Street development and staff report dated March 22, 2023, the planning commission recommends approval of the applications as proposed, provided the following conditions are met. One, approval of all deviations as presented in staff report. Two, applications shall be reviewed and approved by the Johnson County Airport Commission and Board of County Commissioners prior to the release of the plat for recording. Three, the stormwater management plan shall meet the conveyance, detention, water quality and other requirements found in Title 14 of the City of Gardner Municipal Code and other incorporated documents. And four, stream corridors shall be preserved and enhanced with native vegetation as shown on the revised plan stamped as received by the city March 21, 2023 and as supported in the deviation request letter revised March 6, 2023.
Second?
We have a motion made by Ham with a second by McNair. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero with all in favor.
Madam Chair, I also just want to note for those that are in the audience also that this item then goes to the city commission, or city council, sorry about that. Goes to the city council, that'll be at their second meeting in April. So April 17, 2023 is when this is scheduled to move forward unless for some reason it's held up. So I just wanted people to be aware of that because obviously we're recommending or making a recommendation to the city council. They actually have the final decision authority.
Thank you for that, Dave, appreciate it. Okay, final agenda item, number four. Fairfield Development, Z-22-09 rezoning, PDP-22-09 preliminary development plan and PP-22-06 final plat. This is another public hearing item, south of west 183rd Street in the vicinity of South Poplar Street. Do we have a staff presentation this evening?
Again, this is for Fairfield Development rezoning, PDP at a preliminary plat. The property includes approximately 42 acres of land located on the south side of 183rd Street, approximately 2,000 feet west of Gardner Road. Property has never gone through final plating and is undeveloped. Property was part of an annexation back in January of 2002 and it was rezoned the same year from A agricultural to R1 single family. Again, while its properties went through the preliminary plat process, it never followed through with a final plat. The preliminary development plan consists of 121 housing units consisting of 27 single family lots, three multifamily lots and three tracks on 42 acres. There are two points of access into the subdivision, one from an existing curb cut off of 183rd Street and another access point off of west 184th Terrace Road Extension. Because this development was part of a larger planned development, most of the infrastructure was designed and constructed in the past. All utilities are located either within or adjacent to the site. The property is currently zoned R1 single family. To the west is industrial development. East is the original Fairfield subdivision and vacant land zoned for ag. And to the property, to the south, is zoned for a planned garden apartment. According to the city, Gardner comprises a plan in the I-35 Gardner Road subarea. The property was designated as medium density residential. Medium density housing is described as residential uses intending to take the form of small lot, detached or attached, cluster type of housing or small scale multi-dwelling structures such as two-story or four to sixplexes. The core theme of the plan is housing variety to support ongoing investment in housing and attract new residents. Staff feels this promotes infill residential development within incomplete subdivisions, provides a range of housing options and provides a transition from the adjacent industrial development to the west and the single family to the east. The plan reflects generally accepted and sound planning and urban design principles by providing a variety of housing types in the area of community and fiscally responsible extension of utilities. The benefits from any flexibility in the standards allows for projects higher in amenities for residential. The project will benefit the general public health, safety and welfare of the community by providing park and open space, utility extensions and public street extensions. And they're requesting one deviation, not deviations. The deviation is from the general zoning standards, general requirements. The standard, except as specifically provided in this code, no lot may. no lot may have more than one principal building. And they're proposing a multi-unit rowhouse development along the west side of the extension of Popular Street. The applicant's response to this deviation request was the building in this development are multi-unit buildings and is a community within each block. The applicant's request is the lot layout remain as shown and would be consistent with other multifamily buildings throughout, buildings throughout the city. The buildings proposed within this development are being developed as a rowhouse with an internal parking lot system in order to limit the access out onto Poplar Street. And the staff recommends approval of the deviation. Staff findings of the preliminary plat. The proposed development does meet the intent of the comp plan by providing connectivity, open space and neighborhood character. This plat meets the standards of the Land Development Code as it relates to the preliminary plat and gas, water, electric sewer are either adjacent or existing on this site. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R-one district to RP-two and RP-four mixed-density neighborhood districts and associate preliminary development and preliminary plat for Fairfield Development with the conditions.
Great, thanks Bob. This is another public hearing item, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If you would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. Individuals limited to three minutes, those speaking on the behalf of a group can have seven. If the applicant is here this evening and would like to speak now would be a perfect time. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, my name is Doug Bohi. I live at sixteen hundred East College Way in Olathe, Kansas. I want to thank you and the members of the commission and the staff for the privilege of meeting with you tonight, discussing our project. It's been about a year since I started communicating with the staff on this project. We have followed, I think, pretty closely the recommendations that they gave us through the process. We did have a community meeting back probably early summer last year and fielded quite, well, a handful of really what we felt legitimate concerns. One of the major concerns was traffic flow. Another one was density. And another one was just what would our project do to the value of their homes? And so we went back to the work table with the ownership group and the engineering people that were helping us with the conceptual dynamics and came up with what we thought is a very viable proposal. We decided instead of trying to buffer the adjacent single-family subdivision with any multifamily, we decided that it would be appropriate for us to go ahead and put additional single-family lots completely around the perimeter of the existing single-family subdivision. Therefore, we would create a buffer that would, in essence, allow the transition from single-family to multifamily without them being directly affected. We have kept the multifamily rowhouse concept in a position that is along and backing up to the intermodal facility, wanting to fit within the transitional dynamic of such elements of the development. One of the things that we did address was the traffic concern and the traffic through the subdivision. And so we have minimized, based on the professionals' traffic study, working with your traffic engineer, we have minimized the size of the first phase to fit within the traffic profile that would be acceptable. And in doing that, we also agreed that we would not solicit any further development of our project past the first phase until at such time there would be a connector either to the south tying into an arterial down south or going to the east and overtying into, uh, Gardner Road. Not Gardner, yes, Gardner Road. So we've kind of locked ourselves in and boxed ourselves in as far as how far we would go. The staff highlighted the number of total units in the first phase and the first phase is it for the foreseeable future until at such time as we can ease and take care of any other traffic concerns. This will be a maintenance-provided, uh, project on the multifamily side. We will irrigate, we will have extensive plantings, we will take care of all lawn and shrubs and we will take care of snow removal. And it will be a very nicely maintained and a well-presented project. I'm open for questions, but I don't know if this is the time for them, so.
We'll get to them during discussion, so we're happy to have you here.
Well, thank you so much. The engineer representative is here tonight, Greg Watson with McClure Engineering, and the traffic study professional, Janelle Clayton, is here also with Merge Midwest. So they're here to answer questions also. Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. Anyone else like wanting to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record.
Hi, my name's Eric Shaver. I live at one eighty-four seventy-three Butternut Street. I just have brief comments. When this first rolled out, there were a great many more units that were proposed and running traffic. And just empirically, my, my thought was that they wanted to put a thousand people at the end of this dead-end street. It was, I don't remember how many units it was, but that was about what I thought it would be. Maybe that's wrong. You know, what seems to have been done is that they've slowly backed that down, but you know, it's still too much, it's still too many and it's still too close. The schools, you know, I don't know if anybody's looked into the schools or if the planning commission has verified the information that was given about the schools and what they're going to do with all the kids. It's factually going to increase crime. It's going to be dangerous for the kids on the street. Our neighborhood is full of kids, kids everywhere. We don't begrudge this development. We begrudge the multifamily because it's R-one now for a reason. It's adjacent to R-one. I understand that having multifamily units is more profitable. I get that. It's too much and it's too close. And I feel like some of the things that have been trotted out and said have not necessarily been one-hundred percent truthful. But again, you know, that's something for you guys to sort out. But just real quickly, before I wrap this up, could I, I don't know if this is okay, but can I get a show of hands of residents in the neighborhood? If you live in the neighborhood, okay? Okay, hands down. And now if you're opposed to this development, can I get a show of hands? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ruthian Fisher and I reside at one eight-three seven-two Butternut. I apologize, I'm going to probably speak fast because I've got a lot to say in three minutes. I've lived in this, my residence since two thousand and five, probably the sixth resident to Fairfield. During this time, I started a family and seen so much change come from Gardner. First being Gardner's failure not annexing intermodal, hence losing all control for the development. Since that time, Fairfield residents have had to contend with semi-truck traffic, the racetrack that has now become one hundred eighty-third and random strangers walking up and down the streets. I have children, my son plays out in front of our house. This plan set forth is an utter failure. There's no plan to alleviate and address the traffic issues. Despite what he says, everybody's going to be running down Butternut Street and one hundred eighty-fourth Street, which is now, it's already increased because of intermodal traffic. This plan is bringing the multi-density fam, density out, family never wanted. This plan is bringing the multi-density family plan and we never wanted it, nor was that ever planned. When we bought our house, that's not what we intended to live by. We intended to live by single-family residence because that's what it was supposed to be behind us. However, that has since changed. To me, this is just a developer's way for a quick money grab. This multi-housing development will drown out, drowned our already overcrowded schools. Gardner needs more homes as opposed to duplexes and apartments because that's what Gardner's becoming, duplexes and apartments. There are not enough single-family dwellings available to buy for future citizens. Go ask any real estate agent. We've been looking to get out of Gardner because of what it's turning into. Multifamily dwellings bring higher crime rates. Look at other family multi-housing units within Gardner and you will see a higher crime rate. You can go and poll the stats and they are there. The one exception is the duplexes across on the north side of one hundred eighty-third. They however have a high HOA and they take pride in their property. I ask that you don't approve this plan for the safety of our children, traffic concerns as with the other stuff. Our schools being overcrowded already and the safety of our current residents.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name and address.
My name's Ron Riley. I live at one, one three-four, one four-eight, three-six Curry Street. Sorry about that. The main thing I see as a big problem is they were talking, making a thorough turn into this, onto one hundred eighty-fourth Terrace and that's a dead-end street. It also doesn't go all the way through, so there's turn after turn to get to that street to go there. And I think that could be a very bad traffic problem, especially in the fact that in this area, we have a bunch of kids at play. And it's one of the things my wife and I like, those kids are really nice kids, but they play outside. They're not sitting in playing on a computer and they're out there a lot. I think that really needs to be looked at. Plus the fact when we bought our house there, we did the same thing. We looked at what was behind us and what could be built there. And it was mainly single-family homes and I think it's maybe some duplex. And we're fine with that and we'd still be fine with that. But it's when you get into four plexes and eight plexes, it gets to be a problem. And I think you need to really look at that, plus the traffic, but it can be a really big problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing us to go on this item, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Amy Wilkins and I am at one eight-five one-six Butternut Street, the very last house. We have one hundred and twenty-four neighbors and we have compiled a list of our top five concerns. These were the same concerns we had in two thousand eighteen, same concerns we had a year ago and same concerns that I still, we still don't see a clear answer to. Sorry, I'm nervous. Our first is our safety of traffic flow in the streets, it's a highly populated street with children playing and neighbors hanging out. We're going from eighty possible units to three hundred and fourteen. That is a three hundred and ninety-three percent increase. So I know that there has been mention of Poplar Street, but come down to it, when your garment shows up, which way you're cutting through, you're going through our street. You're not going all the way back around, you're cutting through our, you're cutting right past our street that's a current dead-end. You're going from low density to moderate high density, that's a drastic increase. We are also told that the school zone, where will these current school, current students go? You know, the Nike school is already at Max. And then now seeing, we weren't even aware of the Grand Star. These kids would still be crossing Central Street, all of them going. And will it move our current students out of their current neighborhood school? Overseeing this property, who will honestly be overseeing this property five years from now, ten years from now, twenty years from now? Will it actually be someone investing in the single-family homes? Or will it be a builder passing it off to another builder, passing it off to another builder? So although we know what they're saying here today, we don't know what it'll look like five years, ten years. And all of us invested in these homes for, they're our forever homes. This is our forever home for thirty-plus years, not until the property management sells it. Also, could this possibly be government subsidized? We don't know what will happen. So on behalf of, there's thirty-eight people that couldn't be here that also wanted to convey theirs and one hundred and twenty-four in our group that wanted to make sure that these were our top five concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Kenny Burke. I live at one eight-four one-two Curry Street. I guess the biggest thing, I wasn't planning on talking tonight, but the previous proposed development brought up something to me is we were originally told that they couldn't afford to do single-family houses back here because they wouldn't sell because the warehouses. But the previous development doesn't seem to have a problem building right up to the railroad tracks and thinking that those will sell. I would rather live by, I work for the railroad, I know how loud those trains are. I would much rather live in a single-family home next to a warehouse than the tracks. And if they're thinking those houses will sell by the tracks, why wouldn't single-family houses sell by the warehouses too? I built my house in two thousand and ten, been there ever since. I built that knowing that someday there'll be single-family houses backing up to us, but we never had any idea this stuff was going to go on. And I would not have built had I known that. So we've got three kids, would like to stay here, but that's, that's not really what we signed up for when we built. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address.
My name's Courtney Corson and I'm at one eight-three seven-two Mimosa Court. My biggest concern is one hundred eighty-third is heavily trafficked. I walk and I jog a lot with my children. That road is very dangerous for us. I see cars zooming up and down, semis all the time. You've heard them say semis come up and down our main road. I feel stressed going down one hundred eighty-third without more houses down there. So the more houses and the more people you're going to add, the more traffic we're going to have. I feel better off on Main Street jogging than I do on one hundred eighty-third. So that's my biggest concern is all the traffic that's going to be coming down that area.
Josh Eisenberg, three oh-one, three-seven, West one hundred eighty-fifth Street. A lot of them talk about our kids. Mine got hit last year while they were dumping dumps back at the dead-end by my, into my house. Right at the corner, right there by Casey's. Just by people running down the street to Amazon and everything else behind it. My kids go to Nike, my kids go to Trail Ridge, they go to all these schools. I'm not even, I have to pay money for them to go and walk to school or ride a bus. But our sidewalks can't be kept safe. But we're going to add multi-family housing because I don't know what this is. This isn't the one that I was just showed before I got here. Because it's supposed to have a whole bunch of multiplex houses. You're creating problems for the people that have invested retirements in their housing. You're creating problems for the people that have invested retirements in their housing at the back end of this thing. Your safety concerns, crime rate's gonna go up, everybody else is gonna pay for this. But I don't, none of y'all are gonna live back there with us. I lived, and when we sold our house, when we bought it, nothing was supposed to be built there. It's a wetland. It's this giant little circle right there that's a natural spring. That goes to our water reservoirs that they're wanting to backfill and build a house on. How is that safe? And how is that gonna contaminate our water pool? We already have water problems. We have water pressure problems. We have dirt in our water. There's all that stuff that's gonna come, come with this. Our infrastructure's not gonna handle what they want. Nowhere in this town. We've gotta do major infrastructure things before you start planning any of this housing. Where are you gonna put them? Where are you gonna invest in the children that are gonna continue to make this place survive? The streets have gotta be safe. The water's gotta be there. We can't live without ins- outside of the means of what we have around us, and that's what we gotta start looking at. Not because we failed to annex Edgerton and the whole multiplex or warehouses and everything else. Yeah, that's on us. They wanna build them, go tell them, talk to Edgerton. There's a bunch of vacant land and commercial use down there. Single-family homes, let's do it. But we also need to think about where we're gonna put the kids and train them, and teach them, and educate them to live inside the means of where you're at, as a nature. You can't live outside. If you've got a hundred people drinking out of a fifty-person, fifty-person water fountain, people are gonna go hungry, people are thirsty. You can't live outside the means of where your location is. And we need to really start looking at that before we add more places. Because you're, well, that was like a thousand units over there by Grand Star, and we're looking at what, another seven hundred? Or was it eight hundred?
Eight hundred.
That's eighteen hundred units of multi-family housing. Where's all that gonna go? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Dawn Christensen. I live at three zero one seven five West one hundred and eighty-fourth Terrace. Obviously, making my very safe dead-end street a through street. And the gentleman mentioned getting to one hundred and eighty-fourth Terrace is not a straight shot. It's a few turns. I've got small kids in my neighborhood that I care about. Um, our neighborhood is like a family. Um, I have a teenager who's gonna be driving on her own soon. I'm worried about her safety getting home and just more traffic in our, in our area. Uh, my granddaughter goes to Nike. I, I don't know if that's something that she can continue to do for the next few years of her life. If more families move in, more children, and we're rezoned. This is just a bad idea. And obviously, because of where I live, I'm strongly, strongly opposed to my street going through. It pains me that I'm considering moving out of the area, just simply because of what's proposed. That's not what I planned on doing in two thousand eleven when I bought my dream home and moved into one of the best, safest communities in this county. You can ask any police officer, you tell them, oh, I live on one hundred and eighty-fourth Terrace. We never go there. Nothing happens there. That's a great neighborhood. You're lucky to live there. Please don't change that for us. Don't change that for our families. We, we deserve our safe community. Um, obviously, Gardner deserves to grow. Um, but Gardner also deserves to take care of those of us who are already here, feel safe, and wanna remain safe. So please, please consider that very strongly when, um, when looking at these things. I appreciate your time.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll keep it real short. Todd Carter, I live at one eight four two four Curry. I share a lot of concerns with, have already been mentioned, but something I'm still concerned about is the uh, that buffer behind us, the single-family homes. I haven't heard it mentioned, are those uh, private-owned or are those all gonna be rented out? Uh, because we're, we're not in a rental neighborhood, and that's a concern about our property values. I've seen some single-family homes just north of us over by the duplexes that were mentioned. Yeah, it, it's not exactly a stellar neighborhood. There's rodeo clown tires and front yards. They mow their yard twice a year if it needs it or not. Um, they're not taking care of them, and I don't want that behind me. But that's all I gotta say.
Anyone else wanting to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Gil Ludwig, two nine nine five one West one hundred and eighty-fourth Street. One hundred and eighty-fourth Street right now is a racetrack. I can't imagine more traffic coming off of one hundred and eighty-fourth Terrace and cutting down to one hundred and eighty-fourth Street. I'd like to see the traffic study that you've made and see what you have come up with to make this a safe thoroughfare in this area. Already, traffic, I mean, uh, crime has increased. My house was broken into. I caught the guy. No problem. It's gonna happen more and more. The street situation and the children is the biggest problem. It is so user-friendly for the children, the family, the grandparents that come and visit their kids. They know they have a safe place to go to. This is just going to increase the fear that something could happen. So I'd like to see the traffic study that says this is a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the public record.
Andy Nims, one eight five one seven, South Butternut. One question I do have, either for the commissioner or for the applicant, this came up in twenty eighteen. Is this property truthfully designated as a wetland? It's come up multiple times.
As, as a, I'm sorry.
A wetland. Does it carry a wetland designation? With that wetland designation, if it does exist, have environmental studies been done? Um, have, um, to talk to, or to deal with the wildlife, vegetation, water table, so on and so forth? This particular um, piece of property, you know, year in and year out, or each time we've gone through this, it's always wants to go, um, multi-family. My wife's a Realtor. The inventory in Gardner is, there is none. She can't find homes for clients. So what is stopping this area from succeeding as a multi-family develop, or a single-family development? And why is it always going to multi-family? Is it, you know, for the financial benefit of a developer? Is it because it can't happen? Is it because for some reason we feel like we owe housing to the intermodal workers and people? I really, you know, to go back to a comment that was made before, I think that was something that should have been considered when the property was annexed. There's plenty of property in Edgerton, that you can build multi-family there. Couple other things, a lot of what I had to say, a lot of people already hit on. One thing that did stick with me is with this buffer row of houses. Are they rental? Are they owned? Someone that owns their home versus someone that rents their home takes a different stance in how they take care of their home. We've seen it. There is no one here that has not seen that at some point in time in their life. A lot of what we're talking about tonight, um, public safety is a big topic of conversation. That is after it's all said and done. Typically, in commercial projects, I'm a contractor in town. You don't see multi-family button up to single-family. On the multi-family projects that I have a history of working on, it attracts certain types of contractors where theft becomes a problem. Not only for the contractors on site, but for people around it. So not only are we going to be dealing with a crime problem after this is all said and done, but how do we protect ourselves during the construction of this project? If you go to a regular, single-family development, you might have one house being built on this lot, one on this lot, one on this lot. It's contained to those lots. You get into a multi-family project, and there's gonna be five buildings going up at one time. How do we, as residents, protect ourselves from the security issues that come up from all of these additional people being in the neighborhood who bring on crime anyway? I've seen it, um, on projects all around the Kansas City metro. The other thing is the infrastructure. I brought this up four years ago. I moved into my house probably six months before the last time we dealt with this. When I bought my house, we had nice paved asphalt streets. We now have chipping sealed streets that in the four and a half years that I've lived there are falling apart. You start bringing this much just vehicle traffic into our neighborhood, it's gonna destroy the streets. You bring this construction traffic through the neighborhood, which to Amy's point, I don't care what anybody says, that Poplar is the selling point. You plug it into your GPS, you're gonna cut through our neighborhood. Look at the trucks that go to the intermodal. How do you think they end up in our neighborhood? Because Garmin told them to go that way. It doesn't work. We deal with it all the time. Semi's stuck on Butternut or one hundred and eighty-fourth or whatever it may be. So when the roads do get destroyed, is it our tax money that pays for it, or is it the developer that pays for it? That's something to think about, because I can tell you that the taxes in this town, in my opinion, many people will probably support this, are undoubtedly high. We are on chipping sealed streets and paying taxes, which I would assume are based off nice paved asphalt streets. We welcome something like this into our neighborhood, it's gonna be destroyed. Who takes care of that? Does that fall on us as the taxpayer, or is that on the developer?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna interrupt. We need to move along. Time is-
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comment.
I might just, if we can, just ask how many more people wish to speak on this item, since we do have, it's nine o'clock.
Right.
We do have a time limit of ten o'clock on our meetings, so, um, just to get a sense of how many people still may wish to talk on this item, so we can kind of plan out what that hour looks like.
Absolutely. Um, can I get a show of hands for those who still wish to speak on this item?
I just had some real quick.
One, two. Okay, I think we should, yeah, come forward, please state your name and address. We, we just know from a planning commissioner perspective, we've got a, yeah.
Three zero one three six West one hundred and eighty-fifth Street, Adam McNair. In looking at this, I just, I fail to see how one additional row of homes, single-family, is a buffer. And then I see a street here and a street over on Poplar. But to the west, on, on the west side of Poplar is where the row homes are going, correct? So I would invite anybody that hasn't lived in Gardner for a number of years. Wildcat Run was once nice row homes. Woodson Lane was once nice row homes. One hundred and sixty-seven Terrace to one hundred and sixty-seventh Street on Evergreen was once nice row homes. There's some offshoots over there. I don't know all the streets. But the point is, they all used to be nice. And in the, in the course of ten or fifteen years, they turned to dumps. Cars on the side, broken down, tires off them. One row of homes is not, they're not a buffer. So that's the one thing that I wanted to say real quick.
Um, really quickly, I'm Ashay Amri. I live at one eight three five four Butternut Street. Um, we're fairly, actually fairly new to the area, and I'm gonna say it's a little shocking to see the number of multi-family and the, just everything that's anticipated to be behind us. I know, I just wanna echo everything that has been said, um, coming from someone who just recently moved to the neighborhood. The concerns, I mean, we have children, we see the same things, um, have the same concerns. Um, someone had mentioned wetlands, or the potential for them. I would really, really ask that that is looked into. Just walking this last week, the water and the frogs and the nature that is going through, um, that area, it's there. Multi-family in this area, um, it means more parking lots. There are a ton of very well-established trees. Even in the last development that we were discussing, um, it's, there's always a concern of, you know, what kind of sound barriers are you gonna put between the railroad and these developments? Well, we've got a natural one that's doing a pretty darn good job. And if we're gonna put a whole bunch of parking lots and, um, big buildings sitting there instead, we're taking that away, and it's not going to help. So anyways, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Just do a quick, anybody else want to speak on this item? I know I only had two raised my hand, but if we're gonna have more coming up, I saw several raising.
Real quick, I just, my name's Kinsey Nanamaker, and I'm at one eight three five four Mimosa Court. I just wanted to bring awareness to the fact that Veterans Park is also right around the corner from us, um, but you have to cross one eighty-third. And so as far back as we are, a lot of times we'll cross that Butternut and then go over, so just with added, I just wanna make sure you know that there are people walking across that street, and to have it even busier will be even tougher, especially where Veterans is supposed to be expanding, I think, and getting upgraded, so that's all.
Great, thank you. I think we have another one who'd like to speak.
I just got one more question, or thing I'd like to say I missed before.
Okay.
If you drive down through our neighborhood there, those streets are really narrow. You've got one car sitting on the street. You're hard to get another car through. And I think that's a big concern too, when you're gonna add a lot of traffic. I don't know if you need my name or not. Ron Riley again, one eight four three six Curry Street.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the public record.
I'm Jenny McNanny. I live at one eight five zero nine South Butternut. So I'm at the end of Butternut. I'm the second house. The big thing that I wanna bring up is the semi-traffic. While it's not this development's problem, unfortunately, it is the reality of our subdivision, since the warehouses are back there. So if we compile the issue of having semis trying to get through our neighborhood, and right now, we have to worry for our kids of if that semi gets stuck, which they do regularly, and have to back out and do all their maneuvers, what's gonna happen when we increase that traffic load? And then add on top of that, if you have multi-family housing and you have even more people parking on the streets, and the semis still do this and get stuck, again, they don't know better, but that's a real problem that we're facing. Um, the other thing I'd like to encourage you guys to do is, there's a lot of developments going up in Gardner. Can our schools handle, handle this? And what do we need to do so that we're not getting ahead of what our schools can actually provide for our students? Because if we suddenly have X many more people that we've brought and they can't even get in buildings, what have we done? So that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak before we close the public record? Anyone else who would like to speak, before we close the public hearing?
We're at 372 Butternut. Just had a quick question for him, the developer, as far as what is his plan about, are these people going to be part of our development? Where we already have a pool association, because we're not wanting some multifamily dwelling in our pool. I mean, what is your anticipation of that?
No.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay. There's no one else desiring to speak on this item. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Go move.
The motion made by McNear with a second by Ham that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, public hearing is closed. This is now the planning commission discussion. We've got a lot of similarly themed items from the public hearing. I don't know, staff, if you guys, I can read what I've captured and see if the commissioners captured others. We can address maybe some of those heavy hitters, I'll call them. We also have the applicant here too.
I think what we'd like to do, obviously we've heard a lot of concerns about traffic and that. The applicant's traffic engineer is here tonight and could probably speak to the traffic study and what was done there and the assumptions that were made with that. So I would say we would want her to come up and speak to some of those questions regarding traffic to begin with. I will speak a little bit to the wetland issue, which was not a big theme, but it was hit. I want to make sure everybody understands that if there are officially designated wetlands, which meet the Corps of Engineers definitions and things like that, the developer would have to go through a process with the Army Corps of Engineers to mitigate that or to deal with those issues. One thing that we do know about through the discussions here, and it is not incorporated in the plan shown before you tonight, but is part of the southern area, is there is a streamway corridor there. By definition of our codes and regulations, that streamway corridor requires certain setbacks and design elements to it. So we're aware of some of those issues regarding the streamways and that. But again, that is off of the area that's being considered tonight here. So it's part of the blank, or the large blank area that you see on your screens there before you. But I think a good place to start may be with the traffic element of this.
I think that sounds good. Yeah, if the traffic engineer would like to come up, applicant, state your name and address for the public record and speak to us.
Hey, Janelle Clayton with Merge Midwest Engineering, located at 2668 West Catalpa Street in Aletha, Kansas. So when I was approached to do this traffic study initially, we looked at the full development plan as a whole, not just the green area. And Tim Meckel Downey, the city's traffic engineer, had indicated that the city of Gardner has a limit threshold of 1,500 vehicles per day on their residential streets. And it should be said that about, on average, about 40% of the traffic wants to come to and from the south due to the connection to the interstate there. Also, when we think about distributing traffic, especially through residential neighborhoods, if they're twisty-turny, you know, sometimes that's not an attractive route for someone. It's not as direct as maybe going up to 183rd. But in this situation, it was more of a straight shot. 183rd and Center does have a signal, so they could bypass the signal by turning on 184th. So what we found was with the whole plat at the beginning, it was going to be too much traffic on 184th to be able to construct all of that. So then we started to kind of back look at things in an iterative process to determine how many units can be built and keep that volume threshold under 1,500 vehicles per day. And so that's how we arrived at this plan. I do believe that once that Poplar Street connection to the south or an additional connection to the east could be constructed, that would alleviate a lot of that traffic, because those people coming to and from the south can utilize those connections, and rather than coming all the way up to 184th to make those maneuvers. So I do think that once those connections are made, and we did say, you know, another traffic study would have to be done at that time, obviously, with a new development plat, just to make sure that everything would function properly there. But we were able to determine that everything, traffic-wise with volumes, would work within this plat that you have before you today.
Very good, I think that's wise to point out. And maybe for folks in the audience who haven't seen that, 184th Street, according to this plan, it's cul-de-sac. Is that correct? Is that how I'm interpreting that?
That's correctly, the through connection that is shown is 184th Terrace. So 184th Street is cul-de-sac, which would be basically the second cul-de-sac that you see on the left-hand side of the building. That's 184th Street. Then it's 184th Terrace that's shown with a connection, and 185th Street is cul-de-sac also. There is no connection to Butternut from this development proposal here. As was mentioned by the traffic engineer, when the initial plans were brought forward to look at this full area for development, those were the trigger warnings that we received when we started looking at traffic generation, the amount of traffic that came up to Butternut. And that's why this plan's been scaled back significantly from what was proposed originally.
Great, thank you. I'll just kind of look to my commission peers. We did that already. Yeah, we did. You made the motion, Ham seconded. It's okay, no worries.
I have some things. So I know we're talking about the traffic study, that the 1,500 would not be a problem. And I see on here that we do have cul-de-sacs. There's a big difference between would and should. Like if we, if it would not impact... Just about everyone who got up and spoke today talked about the traffic and the routing of semis and things like that. Just because something is payable doesn't mean that it should be done. Another thing that, and this probably isn't for you if I'm speaking for this traffic study, thank you for that, the cul-de-sac thing. I think that does bring out mitigating that traffic, but still putting, it seems like we're trying to stuff a lot into such a a small area.
That's right.
I think my next question is for the applicant. About, there were several questions about private or rental. And someone brought up Wildcat Run. That imagery is very apropos for the situation. I think what Ron, Wildcat Run, used to be and what it is now. So is this going to be private or rental?
So we cannot consider the difference between ownership and rental property as part of our proceedings, so we have to be very careful about that.
I know, I'm sorry.
Again, we need to stick with the land use traffic issues.
Yes, I know, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. The amount of support for this project is very overwhelming. So I, okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Ham, very quickly, what I'm going to interject with is, just so you know, part of the reason that there is a connection is having to do with fire district requirements. With the additional development, we could not have, or the developer could not have just a single entry point at 183rd Street. There had to be a secondary access point in case there was blockage at 183rd and they had a call to get to. So that's part of the reason why one of these roads needed to connect to this.
Can I make a couple comments?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, if you'd like to comment on...
A couple points of clarification. The intent on the single-family lots is to make those for-sale units, okay? Not rented units. So those will be for-sale houses when they're built. Another clarification, you referenced a couple of projects. I'm not totally familiar with them, but I've driven down the roads. Part of the thought process behind this particular layout is that these units are serviced by private street parking dynamics. They do not front onto any of the city streets. So there's a little different dynamic there. You don't have a unit fronting on with a bunch of cars setting in front of it on one of your city streets. I don't know if that clarifies a little bit of the differential, but there is a differential in our layout versus some of the other projects that you mentioned.
There was another, I'm sorry, there was another question that I had relating to, someone had asked about property management. So what is your plan for property management?
There will be a professional team in place hired by the ownership group that will be the property management organization. There will be a homes association established with declarations and guidelines that create the governance of the property for enforcement of vehicles needing to be towed, things like that. There will be the proper documentation, if you will, put in place so that that can be enforced.
Okay, so what you're saying is these homes, the single-family homes that will be closest to our single-family residents, current residents, those will be HOA and property managed?
Those won't be property managed, those will be sold.
Oh, those will be sold, so there will be an HOA for those homes?
Yes.
Okay. And then the row homes will be property managed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that's it.
Okay, all right.
I want to clarify one item very quickly about the drives, so that people understand. Similar to the Grand Street situation, the way Poplar would be designed here, or is required through Public Works, is that this would be built to a collector standard, which means that you minimize the number of drives that are available on it. So the single-family portion, the shaded lots that you see there, the gray, or the green crosshatched lots, there's 27 of them. None of them would have direct access onto Poplar. They would have access either onto the cul-de-sacs or the other streets, the side streets. And that's how those would be formatted. And then as noted on the multifamily, the access points are limited and that's why the buildings are turned the way they are. So there's a limited number of access points that are serving a number of those units. If that makes sense. So you basically have two structures, one on either side of that drive coming into them on the multifamily.
Perfect.
So that's all.
That makes sense.
I just want you to be aware of that with the question you had on the access piece. And those are city standards, so they'd have to meet those standards.
And then we can, we can, the wetlands, is that already being looked at by the City Corps of Engineers? Or is that something that we need to...
It's not, and I'm going to have Helen speak up from Public Works, but my understanding, that is a situation that the developer and the Corps of Engineers, that's, it's coming directly from the Army Corps of Engineers. It has nothing to do with the city as far as wetland designation. But... Wetlands are federally managed. But the streamway that I talked about, there is a local ordinance about streamway setbacks and streamway corridors. The corridor that's been identified is kind of on the east portion of the area that is outside of what you're considering tonight. It's in blank space that's there. But there is a streamway corridor by local designation that the city will have to deal with if they come in with a second phase or they look at this later and want to develop further. They'll have to deal with the streamway corridor issues there too.
All right, now I'm done.
Okay. No, that's totally fine. Thinking more questions, we'll come back around, this is a big one. Commissioner Solzner?
I just have a question to, called the traffic. You mentioned something about the 1,500, the number of cars allowed per day in the neighborhood. So what's the number that you guys came up with?
Got that in here. So you kind of have to calculate it based on, we know the peak hour, so the trip generation that we do is a national standard document. And so that gives you AM and PM peak hour volumes. We had the city collected daily counts along 184th Street, and we determined that the PM peak hour volumes were 8% of the daily volumes. So we took our PM, PM, I'm sorry if this is getting too in the weeds, the PM peak hour volumes, we kind of worked that down. So basically, we could, we calculated that we could actually construct 39 single-family homes and still maintain just under that 1,500 threshold. You know, we were just under 1,500, so we were approaching the 1,500. So you could only construct up to 39 homes. Now, the development shows only 27, so they're actually constructing less than that threshold that we had calculated.
Helen, do you want to speak to the standard that the city has on that at all, 1,500? Other than to say that that's the absolute maximum we would allow on a neighborhood street. The absolute maximum. So the traffic study would be required to demonstrate that they're meeting that threshold, but it is a city standard, the 1,500 is a city standard that we use.
And we're at what right now?
Well, we didn't, we calculated just under, we were, we could construct up to 39 single-family homes to get to the 1,500. And we are at 27, and I don't have that exact calculation in front of me of what it was, but it was less than the 15.
1,500 is the max?
Is the max. And so we could construct...
So we're approaching the max?
Right, we could construct 39 homes and still be just right under that maximum of 1,500. And I don't know exact, I don't have that exact number with me. But we were under that 1,500, but we're only constructing 27 of those 39. So we're, you know, under that threshold. Well, that was, that was the, that was my, I guess my threshold I was given was 1,500. And so we started, like I said, with that entire development plan that was way too much traffic. And so I was tasked to determine how much of this could we build and still be within that 1,500 threshold? And so we weren't, you know, that was just the task I was given. They decided to construct less than that maximum.
Commissioner Combs, questions? Okay. Commissioner McNear? Commissioner Gineman?
Does the developer have any renderings of what the row housing might look like? I didn't see any in the packet.
Did you, did you have any renderings?
Yeah, because there were some example developments given, but not like the specifics what they were looking at. This would be, this would be inside the pots, this would be facing north and south. And then along Poplar, you would see the side elevation view, is that correct?
I can't hardly hear you.
Sorry, so this is if you're looking north and south for the majority of the multifamily, is that correct?
Yes.
Greg Watson with McClure Engineering. And yes, so this would be on the private drive that you're seeing between the townhomes. The view that you would see from Poplar Street will be the end of the unit, so it'll be more of a residential size scale that you'll see from the public street.
Do you have a view of that as well?
We do not have a rendering of that. That's not typically part of this process for the rezoning, but it would be very similar to what you see on the front.
So at final development, if this were approved by the city council, final development plan is where we would see those kinds of details on each of the elevations and we would be able to make adjustments to our potential quality and things like that as part of that.
And yeah, I guess kind of going back to the whole multifamily reason why it's being brought up for rezoning in that sub-area plan for the interchanges, be as a buffer for heavy commercial areas west of the property, is that correct? For the warehouse area, warehouse area. Because going out there, I mean, it looks, and just from aerials, it looks like they've got a kind of detention basin, that's kind of a buffer for the building away from... So I guess that commercial development's even kind of further away from where the property owners would be.
Sorry, you're talking about Edgerton, I don't deal with Edgerton.
But yes, you're saying a 300-foot buffer between the Edgerton County line, Littleville, and the warehouses back there. With the berm that the kids go sled on when it gets nice and fine in the snow.
and fine with snow.
Okay. No, I didn't.
I have looked at the area that you're talking about, and yes, they do have a retention basin as part of those industrial developments directly to the west, so yeah, there's.
Yeah, speaking of please, we can't hear you.
Sorry, my cold is getting to me right now. I appreciate, I'm sorry about that. Yeah, the industrial development over in Edgerton, they do have a fairly sizable retention pond.
It's not a pond, it's just a berm. It's just a berm, it's a big dirt pile.
It's Edgerton's, correct? So it's not applicable to conversation here. Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Juneman, sorry.
No, I just want to appreciate all the, all the community members coming out and developer coming out explaining. It's really great to get feedback on projects like this, and I know, I, and I can speak for the rest of the commission and staff, that we appreciate you guys being here, so thank you.
Absolutely. Good call out. Commissioner Cooper?
I, too, wanted to say that I really appreciate that you all came out and stood up for your community. We're volunteers, but what you think and how you feel about your community and what goes into it is important to us.
I don't have any questions. Well, I do have one question, real quick, for staff, and then we'll see if there's any other quick roundtable last minute. I was not on the commission when the application came before for the rezoning in 2018, and it was denied from R1 to R4. Can you give me a little bit of background on why that was?
Luckily, well, I was not on staff at the time either. My understanding of that history, and Bob was here for a short period of time when that was going on, I believe, and so he can verify this, I'm trying to save his voice a little bit.
Sure.
So from my understanding at that time, the development proposal was for the entire area, including that blank area that you saw to the south. It was significantly different in the sense that it was much more multifamily-oriented throughout the whole thing, and there was a community meeting held as part of that process, but I believe there was a community meeting held as part of that process, but also there was a planning commission meeting there, and one of the issues was at that time, as they came forward, wanting the R, I believe it was R4 zoning without any development plan. And that was a reason why that was not.
And that was, okay, so it was not a planned development, it was just straight up the R zoning.
Right, so it was not passed. In this scenario, what we are dealing with here is a preliminary development plan associated, so these are planned districts like we've dealt with before, which starts locking in a great number of details about the development itself, the zoning that can be applied, and what's to be expected through the development plan process. Obviously, it, it's a lot, it locks in, for instance, something like the number of units that are proposed here. There's 121 units that are proposed for this segment of the parcel overall. 27 of those are single-family homes. There's certain standards that they'll have to meet through that process, okay? So that's, that's what you're looking at tonight, but the development plan review process allows us to go through this in greater detail than when you get a standard zoning request for just land use without any development.
Sure.
I think, and the reason I want to kind of talk about this, too, is because I think what you heard tonight is, there were people kind of referring to different, I think, previous iterations of this plan, and you even heard it from the traffic engineer, there was an original plan in this process that had a greater number of units that covered the whole area. Again, when we got to the details of the traffic study, that's what began scaling back this project before it came forward to you. So just understand, some people may have seen previous iterations, and that's why I'm being very careful to say that this only involves the 121 units overall, 27 of which are single-family homes, so just so you're aware of that.
Okay, and what, I guess going back to the traffic impact study, I know we're looking at 121 units, but the 27 units are pushing to that meeting? Is what I'm understanding.
I'm going to ask the audience to hold the applause and things while we're having the conversation, please, because we need to try to get through this.
And if I can clarify on that.
Yeah, and I'm going to let the traffic engineer go with this.
I don't know if I just didn't hear that correctly, or I didn't understand.
So the threshold number is really the overall number of units. So when, I believe what the traffic engineering, engineer was referring to is, you could have seen a proposal with 12 additional single-family units, or 12 additional units to get to that threshold, okay? Whether they were single-family or multifamily really doesn't matter, it was a 12-unit difference. So that's where they are in comparison to that. I'll let the traffic engineer speak to that, though.
Yes, that's correct. And so we have 39 single-family homes and then 94 single-family attached to get to that, that threshold number that we were calculating. So, yeah, we included the 94 attached single-family row homes in that, in that calculation. And I, and I did want to go.
I was going to just interject, so, and part of the reason, I think that the references to the 12 single-family units is because the single families that's shown along 185th Port, which is the last cul-de-sac on the right-hand side, would have been extended to include that, and that's also where we figured out where the streamway corridor may be, and where there may be some setback requirements. So some of that was pulled off of there because they were not ready to address those requirements.
And so I wanted to address your earlier question about what number were we at? So if we did all 39 homes, which we are not, we would have been at 1463. So we're just under that 1500, and now with our 27 single-family plus the row homes, we're at 1,016 vehicles per day. So I just wanted to give you that clarification.
Thank you.
So we're at like 98% of 2%.
Any other questions? I'm just kind of looking around.
Yes, first off, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming tonight, and everybody that, with the developer and builders making their comments. At this point, I, I think I am going to have to recuse myself because I have family members that live in the community, and I don't think that I can make a fair or impartial vote either way. So I just, at this point, I just, I feel conflicted, and I don't really want to participate in the motion.
That's fair. Any other commissioner comments?
I'll also echo my fellow commissioners, thank you guys for coming out. This is why we have these public hearings, and to see a packed house is fantastic.
It's heartwarming.
It's awesome. It's awesome. And to echo Commissioner Cooper, we're volunteers, and to actually see you guys concerned about your community, want to ask questions, want to be engaged, that's amazing. So thank you, guys, and also thank you to the applicant for being here and bringing with you a staff to have discussion. That's always appreciated as well.
This is our city government at work.
Well, it's part of it. That it is.
This is a citizen's voice.
Yeah, and you know, also, to remember, guys, this is just a planning commission. We had a lot of comments about the school and the concerns, how that's going to work. You guys reach out to your school board contacts, because as Dave stated with the earlier public hearing, we can advise, and they are welcome to come to the meetings, they are welcome to review the videos, so they are engaged. You know, feel free to, to reach out to those, those members, because we just, we have no control over that. There's nothing we can do besides extending the invite.
Well, if you told it earlier, I would call up the principal.
Any, does staff have anything else to comment?
I just wanted to check and see if we hit the themes you had marked when we were originally starting the conversation. You had mentioned you had some major themes, and I just want to make sure if we hit all the themes that you had.
Yeah, I'm looking here. We got the street traffic, talked about the wetlands. Again, 184th was another common theme, but there's nothing that we can do, but it is well noted regarding 183rd, and also the piece about the Garmin mapping. We can't do anything, but at least, oh, sorry, at least the concern was aired, so it's on record now.
Yeah, and the Public Works Director was here to hear it, so.
And also the chip and seal, again, nothing we can do from that perspective. Another question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I do have a question, I forgot to bring this up, but about Butternut, it is a dead-end street. Is there any signage or anything that, at the entry point of Butternut?
It doesn't matter.
And it's still.
There's also signs that says no tracks, but we get tracks.
It's just a bad.
It's an enforcement issue.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any last-minute question, comment?
I'm still just a little, that's, that's still a lot of cars on that traffic study, and I just want to make sure, another question back to staff, is the, I know it's now an RP, right, the plan designation for the zoning, so I appreciate that guardrail, but is the density, or is it the density or the intensity use that requires RP4, such a high, that's the highest within residential?
It is the type of building that would be built that requires the RP4, okay? The actual density that is proposed here, according to the plan anyway, the net density is 5.36 units per acre, which is about a typical suburban subdivision density. So when you're looking at that, that's the net density of this, it takes out the roadway sections and stuff like that, that is just the private development, that's what the plans indicate on them that are before you.
Commissioner Cooper, did that, spread another question?
Just to, so we're clear on this, the RP4 is because of the building type that is being proposed, which is the town home or row home building type, so that triggers the need for that development, that zoning.
For the, for that.
It's a Thor and eight class.
Could you please remain quiet, or else I'm going to have to ask you to leave, being very rude, whoever it is speaking. Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the commission before we entertain a motion on the side of the motion? Are there any, I'd entertain a motion?
And do understand, you do have the ability to make a motion outside of what is recommended, so.
That's correct.
Just because of what the staff has listed there, understand our role is to look at the codes and regulations, to make sure that they're fitting our codes and regulations. You've heard from the public, if you feel a different motion is necessary, that's certainly up to you. And legal advisors here to help you word that.
Absolutely. All right. I, I would like to make a motion to deny the application. I'm sorry, the traffic, the traffic impact study approaching so close to 1500 really just makes me uncomfortable.
Second that motion?
I did hear, have, receive a motion made by Ham, and I heard, I heard Commissioner Combs second that motion, right ahead of you, Commissioner Cooper. So we have a motion on the floor to deny the application made by Ham, with a second by Combs, to deny.
Is there anything I need to add to that motion?
Yeah. Or is there questions from the commission on that motion?
Real quick, so like, does this still go to city council?
Yes, so this will still go to city council. They are the decision-making authority, you are a recommending body.
Okay.
Okay, no questions on the motion, I'll entertain a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And any abstentions?
So motion carries to deny the application six to zero, or six to zero, six in favor, zero nay, and we have one abstent.
So just so everybody stands, just like the last item, I want the audience to understand, this will go before the city council on April 17th, the second meeting of April, at their normal scheduled meeting at 7:00 PM here in these chambers. So they will consider the recommendations and make a decision.
Thank you. We have nothing else from staff this evening? Any commissioner have anything for staff? Not? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
A motion to adjourn made by McNair with a, I'll give the second to Juneman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting's adjourned, motion carries seven to zero.